All right, good evening. This is a special meeting of the Carabelle City Commission, and it is now in session. It's Thursday, December the 15th, 2022, 5:00 p.m., and we're conducting this public hearing and the special meeting in the Carabelle City Hall chambers. And our meeting will open with a prayer by Commissioner Melander, and then I will leave the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, thank you again for another wonderful day. Thank you for allowing us to come together and conduct our business here for the benefit of the great city of Carabelle. As we go through our business here tonight, we ask your guidance and direction in doing the welfare and business that is in the proper manner for the welfare of the citizens in the city of Carabelle. In your name we pray.
I'm glad you're here. Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation, one under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome again. I'm glad you're all here. If any, like I said before, if anyone wants to speak, if you want to speak under either of these items or even both of these items that we have on the agenda, you'll need to complete a speaker card and give that to Ms. Keisha, and also sign in on the log. If you didn't sign in on the sign-in sheet, do that on your way out if you would. With the speaker card, you'll be allowed three minutes at the podium, and then just at one time. So please, please do that because you may have questions. And then on the item that some of you are here about, we won't be voting on that today. So just a first reading, and we'll vote on that at our second hearing, which is scheduled for January the 5th. So right now, we need to make an amendment to the agenda, and I'm going to request that we move Item 1 before the public hearing. And do we have a motion for that? Okay, we have that motion by Commissioner Melander. Okay, and then Second back Commissioner Brown. Is there any discussion of that? Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, and then that motion carries. Okay, so we'll move then right into Item 1, which is a discussion of possible action regarding hiring a water and sewer Tech 1 employee. And I believe that you all did your interviews. If Courtney or Charlie would like to just tell us about that. And then tell us your recommendation would be good as well.
So I had four applications. I interviewed three. One of the applicants didn't put a phone number on, and I tried to call a couple of references, and I didn't get any answers, so that applicant didn't get interviewed. My recommendations would be Jerry Low, and he has some experience working with Wayne Conrad, and St. George Island Wastewater Plants, and shows interest in trying to get a license and stuff in the near future.
Okay. And Ms. Courtney, did you interview Mr. Low? Okay. So, do the commissioners have any questions at this point? Or Mr. Charlie Painter is our Water and Sewer Superintendent.
I don't have any question. I had a discussion with the city administrator about the process that Charlie went through with his interviews, and his interviews, so I'm content with that. And I'll make a motion to accept Mr. Painter's recommendation.
Okay, we have that motion by Commissioner Melander. Do we have a second?
One second.
Mr. Low is in here. You want to introduce him?
Hi, Jerry Low is in the back.
Hello.
Hello. Hi, Jerry Low. I've lived here for quite some time. I was Carabelle painter at one point. I just moved back, and now I'm a property owner in Carabelle, and it seemed a really good job for me. I think I'd like to work until retired, which is about 30 years from now.
All right. We'll see you then.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'd like to go.
Thank you.
I don't want to stay over here.
All right. Thank you very much. It was a pleasure to meet you. And yes, I did speak with, we're in discussion now. I spoke with Ms. Courtney as well, and she told me about the interviewing process, and we appreciate you doing that. So we have a motion by Commissioner Melander, Second back Commissioner Brown, to approve the recommendation by staff to hire Mr. Jerry Low for the Water and Sewer Department. Is there any further discussion? All right, all in favor? Any opposed? And that motion carries. And thank you, Mr. Charlie Painter. And welcome aboard, Mr. Low. We look forward to seeing you.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, thank you. All right, then we'll move on to the public hearing, which is ordinance number 487, and I'm going to ask Mr. Hartman to read the title of that first for us.
Okay, this is ordinance number 487. By title, ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Carabelle, Florida authorizing operation of golf carts on certain city-owned and maintained streets and roads, prescribing standards for equipment required on golf carts operated on city streets, requiring the posting of signs pertaining to where golf carts may be operated, providing for enforcement, appealing to conflicting ordinances, and providing a savings clause and providing effective date.
Okay, thank you. Today, I learned that there was a small group of people in Carabelle that, for some reason, I don't know where they got this, I don't know how they figured it, but they figured that the commission was trying to develop an ordinance to ban golf cart operation in the city. And that's far from what we're trying to do here. We're trying to get golf cart operations allowed in the city as required by Florida statute as soon as possible. That's why we're having this special meeting tonight even. So, and I'm going to ask Mr. Hartman to read this ordinance that we have. It's this many words and this many words, and I want him to read paragraph by paragraph. And if the commission has questions, we're going to ask questions. But I've told him, he doesn't have to read the definitions unless you all want a definition of a golf cart, low-speed vehicle, utility vehicle, and all-terrain vehicle. But the definitions are here, and they'll be included in the ordinance if anyone has a question there according to Florida statute. So, Mr. Hartman, if you'll tell us what you have there for your amended ordinance.
All right. So it starts out with the whereas clauses, and that is, whereas pursuant to Section 316.212 of statutes, the City Commission has the power to adopt ordinances necessary to authorize operation of golf carts on designated city streets and roads. Whereas the City Commission finds that operating golf carts on streets and roads within the city is desirable to conserve energy, reduce automobile traffic, and provide alternative modes of travel for its citizens. And whereas the City Commission finds that it has considered factors regarding public safety, including the speed, volume, and character of motor vehicle traffic using streets or roads designated for golf cart traffic, and has determined that use of golf carts in the areas permitted by this ordinance will not present a danger to the public health, safety, or welfare. And whereas the City Commission desires to maintain a high quality of life for the citizens of Carabelle, Florida, now therefore being enacted by the City Commission of the City of Carabelle, Florida.
Okay, let me ask you some questions about these whereas. So it says in there that the City Commission finds that operating golf carts on streets and roads within the city is desirable. It says that, right? Do we all know that? Do we all agree to that in principle? Okay. It's desirable to conserve energy, reduce automobile traffic, and provide alternate modes of travel for its citizens. And it says that we have determined, this commission as a whole, the majority, has determined that the use of golf carts in the areas permitted by this ordinance will not present a danger to the public health, safety, and welfare. We all agree that that's what this ordinance says? Okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Hartman.
All right. The next section, Section 1, is definitions, and these definitions include the definition of golf cart, low-speed vehicle, utility vehicle, and all-terrain vehicle. The next section is Section 2. And Section 2, number 1, is that golf carts may be operated on all streets and roads within the city with the following exceptions, where the posted speed limit is 35 miles an hour or less. And it's on Highway 98, except, so we're allowing golf carts to cross at, well, I say this with DOT approval that Russell's working on, at southeast Third Street and Highway 98, and Fourth Street northwest and Highway 98. Number 2, golf carts must be operated on streets and roads within the city as defined herein and not on adjacent sidewalks. Number 3, all golf carts operated within the city limits of Carabelle shall be equipped with efficient brakes, reliable steering apparatus, safe tires, a rearview mirror, red reflectorized warning devices on the front and rear of the vehicle, brake lights, and a windshield. Number 4, operators of golf carts equipped as described above must use standard hand and arm signals to advise other motorists of their intention to turn or change lanes. See, it's typo there. Number 5, pay special attention here, I'm going to read this, and I had missed a, I would call clerical error in this before, but I'm going to read it as it will appear in the ordinance. And it's, golf carts equipped as described in Number 3 above may operate on any street located in the city other than those designated in Section 2 Sub 1 at any time during daylight hours. So that's how that will read. Number 6, golf carts equipped with headlights, taillights, brake lights, and turn signals in addition to the items in Number 3 above and otherwise equipped for nighttime operation in accordance with Florida law may operate on designated streets and roads during all hours including non-daylight hours. The city may extend hours of operation in conjunction with special events. Number 7, drivers of golf carts must be at least 14 years old. Number 8, golf carts may not be operated on state roads identified in Section 2 Sub 1 within the city limits or on sidewalks adjacent to such state or any roads within the city limits. Golf carts may not cross state-owned roads unless at locations specifically permitted by the Florida Department of Transportation and county respectively. And number 9, this ordinance does not regulate operation of golf carts in gated communities with private roads.
Okay. Commissioner Brown, did that get your clerical revisions? Okay. Do you have questions? Does anyone have questions to Mr. Hartman about this section here, Section 2? Okay, I do, just for public. And I do have a question. At one point, we're under A, 1A, Highway 98, there you had pending FDOT approval. Why? I don't know how that got lost. I think, although you say it down here in Number 8, Section, Number 8 parentheses under Section 2, I'm thinking if you put it up there, it would help for clarity for law enforcement or, you know. What do you think about that, Commissioner Brown?
That makes sense.
Okay.
All right, so we'll put that back in. And that should change.
And so what it's saying then, I just want to make sure I understand it now, is that golf carts may be operated on all streets and roads in Carabelle within the city limits where the speed limit is 35. Is that correct?
35 miles an hour or less, all county and city roads, not state roads.
Right. Except the following exception that's listed there, and that's on Highway 98. Why can't they operate on Highway 98?
Because it is a state road.
And what? The state won't allow them to operate on Highway 98?
Correct.
Okay. That's what I thought. All right, so they can operate. What are we doing right now? We're going to reach out to the state and see if we can cross here at these sections?
Yes, Russell is, I think, following direction that was given by the commission at a prior meeting, that he is to contact DOT to inquire about just the requirements and get approval for those two crossings that were listed there.
Okay, and that crossing is at southeast Third Street and Highway 98 where the old Dollar General is. You cross over to the west side of Stan's Park. And then that other one is at right there at Veterans Park and the boat ramp, and you cross over on the west side of Veterans Park. Is that?
Yes.
Okay. And we're going to ask the FDOT if we can do that. All right. But golf carts can't go on sidewalks, is that correct?
Correct. No sidewalks.
And that's according to Florida statute. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then where it gives the equipment listed, is that according to Florida statute? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then they have to use their standard arm signals and that kind of stuff. That's according to Florida statute.
Yes.
All right. And then they got to have headlights and taillights and brake lights and turn signals if they want to operate during non-daylight hours. That's Florida statute too. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay, and then you just go ahead down here in Number 8, and it just reconfirms that pending FDOT approval that golf carts may not cross state-owned roads unless at locations that are specifically permitted by the Florida Department of Transportation and county respectively. Okay. All right, thank you.
Sure. So then Section 3 entitled low-speed vehicles, and a low-speed vehicle may be operated within the city limits where the posted speed limit is 35 miles an hour per hour or less as permitted by and under the conditions established in Florida Statute Section 316.2122. Pursuant to Florida Statute Section 316.2122 Sub 1, this does not prohibit a low-speed vehicle from crossing a road or street at an intersection where the road or street has a posted speed limit more than 35 miles an hour. According to the requirements set forth in Florida Statute Section 316.2122, a low-speed vehicle must be equipped with headlights, brake lights, spelling, turn signal lamps, reflex reflectors, parking brakes, rearview mirrors, windshield, seat belts, and vehicle identification numbers. A low-speed vehicle must be registered and insured in accordance with Section 320.02 of statutes. Number 3, low-speed vehicles may be operated at any time. So that deals with, again, low-speed vehicles, not golf carts. Section 4, utility vehicles. A utility vehicle may be operated during a city-approved special event only on city streets and roads within the special event area, preparing for, conducting, or recovering from an approved special event. A utility vehicle must be equipped with efficient brakes, reliable steering, safe tires, a rearview mirror, red reflectorized warning devices in front and rear, brake lights, and a windshield. Number 3, a utility vehicle may be operated during the city-approved special event within the special event designated area consistent with Florida law. Number 4, a utility vehicle may not be operated on any city streets and roads by anyone. 5, all-terrain vehicles shall not be considered utility vehicles and are expressly prohibited from operation on any and all city streets and roads.
Question. Clarification for the public. Define a low-speed vehicle.
All right. A low-speed vehicle, and this is pursuant to Section 320.0142, is any four-wheeled vehicle, electric vehicle it says here, whose top speed is greater than 20 miles an hour but not greater than 25 miles an hour, including neighborhood electric vehicles. And low-speed vehicles must conform to the safety standards that we described earlier as far as brake lights and registration and insurance, and that's what it is.
Hey, but I have a question for the public. Those, I know the couple is here in town. I don't know if they're going to classify them as utility vehicles or low-speed vehicles. They look like a utility vehicle, but what's just defined is defining a low-speed vehicle.
There is a definition of utility vehicle as well.
I understand that. But it's confusing to me, and I know it's confusing to the public for those that have the vehicles that can be misconstrued as a utility vehicle, as they're calling it, and it is actually, by what you just said, a low-speed vehicle.
If it's a low-speed vehicle, and, just go ahead.
I'll give you an example. A Polaris Ranger, UTV, electric. It's limited to less than 25, but it looks, and it meets the headlights, all the requirements.
Right.
But that officer, when he goes out there to perform his duties, it looks like a utility vehicle. But it beats all those requirements as a low-speed vehicle.
But it is a utility vehicle, and therefore would not be allowed.
But what defines the difference between a utility vehicle and a low-speed vehicle?
Is, utility vehicle is a motor vehicle designed and manufactured for general maintenance, security, and landscaping purposes. So, I mean, again, I think Polaris Ranger would be what you have out on your farm, or you're using it for maintenance, security, landscaping, obviously hunting, that sort of thing. But that is not a golf cart or low-speed vehicle.
It's a fine line.
It is, it is.
And I'm not trying to complicate it. I'm just trying to make sure we can be clear with the public.
Well, I know that, you know, people talk about ATVs, because when I think of a Ranger or four-wheeler, I mean, I know four-wheelers are different than a Ranger, but ATVs can also blend into UTVs.
Not really. I see a difference, I see a significant difference between an ATV and a UTV.
I believe that the chief could help with this definition as well.
Could they be registered and tagged?
They are. That's what I just asked.
Yeah, if it's registered and tagged, then it's what I believe.
Exactly. But it looks just like a UTV.
But if they have a tag on them, do they have a tag on them? A regular tag like a one?
A Florida state issued tag. Yeah, it would be a Florida state issued tag. It would have a VIN number, it would have to go through the Department of Highway Safety and Motor Vehicles to be registered.
So you have insurance and it's tagged, meaning yes, you're good.
Again, I'm not wanting to complicate what we're doing here, but I want to make sure we're clear with the public when we have to deal with it.
Let me simplify it. Any vehicle that can be registered and tagged and insured is allowable to drive on the roadway.
And that would be state road 98.
Okay, there you go. That's one further question. Is crossing the bridge?
Yes. As long as it has, as long as it's less than 35 miles an hour, and it's got a tag and insured, and it's been registered with the Florida Highway Safety and Motor Vehicles, that's fair.
Okay, that's what I understand, but I'm, here again, I'm just discussing for the benefit of the public.
Yep.
Thank you, sir. Sorry, Dan.
That's fine, you know, it's good.
I would ask, I'm stuck on utility vehicle too, because there's a lot of folks out there with utility vehicles, and they're insisting that they're golf carts. And, you know, as I've been studying this, and actually over the years, this is something I've wanted to have a golf cart ordinance for 11 years, but we never took it up because it's so controversial. But we're doing it now.
And we're going to get it done.
Yes, we are. A utility vehicle, let me find it for you, just read this. The Florida statute will not allow a regular utility vehicle that you just described here in Section 4 to operate on a public road. Is that correct?
That's, that's, yeah, I'm going to read it.
That's by Florida statute.
A low-speed vehicle can't go over 25 miles an hour. I don't know if the UTV in particular can.
But Florida statute will not allow utility vehicles on roadways, any roadways in Florida, except during a special event approved by the city or the county.
Correct.
Okay. All right. And Florida statute, I think, does not allow all-terrain vehicles on any roadways in Florida. Has to be operated on private roads.
Off-road vehicles is basically more than 80.
Yep, there is, and, again, if there is one exception on unpaid roads that are less than 35.
Okay. All right. All right, do we have any other questions? Commissioner Gray, do you have anything?
I think I do.
Okay.
I have a club car that we've outfitted with a dump bed on the back. Still a golf cart. What's it?
25 or less, if it's 20, 25, instead of low-speed, anything over 25.
It's going to be under 20. It's a golf cart that's just outfitted with a dump bed.
Yeah, as long as it's classified as a golf cart. What is the classification of the vehicle is what matters most? It doesn't matter what it looks like, it's what it's classified as through DHS and the D.
Okay. Anything else?
Sid.
All right, thank you. And go ahead, can Mr. Hartman move forward?
Yes.
So Section 5 is operator to assume risk and identify and hold harmless. This is where any person operating a golf cart on any city street does so at his own risk, and must operate such vehicle with due regard for the safety, convenience, and other motor vehicles, bicyclists, and pedestrians. The city in so designating certain city streets for operation of golf carts extends such operating privileges on the express condition that the operator of golf carts undertake such operation at his or her own risk and assume sole liability for operation of vehicle on city streets, and by such operation shall be deemed to agree to defend, release, identify, and hold harmless the city of Carabelle, its officials and employees for and regarding any and all claims, demands, or damages of any nature whatsoever arising from such operation by any person against the city here. Then you've got Section 6, compliance. This is, golf carts shall comply with all applicable local and state traffic laws in the same manner as a motor vehicle under state law, and shall be occupied by no more passengers and for whom there are seats in the golf cart. Section 7, enforcement. Golf carts, number 1, golf carts, utility vehicles, and low-speed vehicles shall comply with all local and state traffic laws, and may be cited for traffic violations in the same manner as other vehicles. Number 2, enforcement of infractions of this section shall be provided in Chapter, as provided in Chapter 316 of statutes, as may be amended from time to time. Law enforcement may issue citations for violations as set forth in state law. And then Section 8, which is severability, that if any portion of this ordinance is declared invalid or enforceable, then to the extent as possible, do so without destroying the overall intent and effect of the ordinance. The portion deemed invalid or unenforceable shall be severed hereupon, and the remainder of this ordinance shall continue in full force and effect as if it were enacted without including the portion found to be invalid or unenforceable. And then Section 9 is the repeal of all ordinance or parts of ordinances which are in conflict with this ordinance hereby repealed to the extent necessary to alleviate the conflict but shall continue in effect insofar as they are not in conflict here with, unless repeal of the conflicting portion destroys the overall intent and effect of any of the conflicting ordinances, in which case these ordinances so affected shall hereby be repealed in their entirety. Section 10 is the ordinance becoming effective upon adoption. And there's two other issues I know have been, well, number 1, this is just first reading, so no action required tonight. The second was a mission I was given after the last meeting, which I'm seeing again here. I was private paperwork. Again, it has the stamp of DOT on it, who I have reached out to, two different people at DOT. I've not heard back from either. To the, to this question, on golf carts operating on designated roadways with posted speed limits of 30 miles an hour or less. So at this point, obviously, I'm still waiting to hear back. I don't have the final word, which I, it's frustrating, but I did obviously dig into the plain language of the statute and where this language is found, which talks about golf carts not being allowed to be operated, or not operating on roads with posted speed limits more than 30 miles per hour. But this language of 30 miles an hour or less is in a section 2132126 that deals with municipal employees operating golf carts. So not under a golf cart ordinance, but just if there was, even if there was no golf cart ordinance, city employees can operate golf carts and use them for just municipal purposes, say picking up trash or code enforcement, that sort of thing, in the absence or even without a golf cart ordinance. And this language is in that, this is where that language is from, and it restricts those employees from driving out onto roads that have posted speed limits. But they limit them to driving golf carts on roads with a 30 mile an hour or less speed limit. So these would be roads that, none of which are posted for golf carts or anything. So at this point, until DOT tells us different regardless of, and that's frustrating because, you know, I've seen this now two or three places, and this one... And this one is, has an FDOT symbol on it, and it talks about that. But I cannot find anything in the law that, that, that requires that in the statute. So, until someone points that out to me, I've looked.
Now, my question. My clarification, 30 miles an hour. Now, are we talking about general public use? Are we talking about employee, a public employee use? City, county, state employees using those vehicles for their use of maintenance, et cetera? Are we talking about citizens' use, or talking about employee usage?
So, sorry, that's the distinction I'm making. So, at, yes, at the last meeting, and this has popped up, and it's very confusing, because, for instance, this is, this is for public. This isn't for municipal, right? This is telling people, hey, golf carts, how to use them safely on, in Florida.
Correct.
And on the back, I was looking for it in here, and on the back it has golf carts versus low-speed vehicles, little chart, and it gives, everything here is consistent, consistent. And it says, where can it be operated? And it says, on designated roadways with posted speed limits of 30 miles an hour or less. Right? So, that's a, this is not a legal document necessarily, it's just informational. And where you find that 30 miles an hour or less language is, is down in, put an explanation of this. 316.2126, which is a whole different section of statute than what we're dealing with. So we're, we're adopting an ordinance under 316.212, which is, we keep calling it, it's right, it's a golf cart ordinance statute, where a city can designate its roadways inside the city, um, as for use of golf carts. This is something addition, and it says, in addition to the powers granted under 316.212, it says that municipalities can, are authorized to use golf carts and utility vehicles on municipal roads located in, within, within the corporate limits of the city. And these are, again, operated by municipal employees. And it states here, under one C, that it's, this is where this language comes from, I believe. Golf carts and utility vehicles may be operated only on state roads that have a posted speed limit of 30 miles an hour or less. And again, that, there's also, I know it's late, and everybody's worn out, but it also talks about state roads. So that's, that's, that's a different, and they make, in some places, they mix the two together, and other places, you know, are state roads, local, county, or city, county, and state? Or is it just state, and they're not? But again, that language that I found here, and that in other material that people have given me, that's the language. And it, um, it's not in 316.212. 316.212 just says, hey, you gotta consider the speed, the volume, type of traffic. Doesn't say 30 mile, you, you know, it's 30 miles an hour, or it only grows 30 miles, miles an hour or less posted speed limit.
Okay, well, my feeling right now is, is my feeling is, I would like to see us continue to move forward with affordability, not stall, and where we can get our golf carts back in legal use within the city. And those questions that we have, such as that, with low-speed vehicles, utility vehicles, we can address those down the road. We, when we get a plain answer for those. I wouldn't want to stall what we're doing right now, and wait on answers for that right there. That's just my feeling.
Commissioner Melander, I feel the same. I don't want to stall it. And we did talk about at our commission meeting that we would, uh, if we found out some different things, or experienced some different things with the age of the drivers or something, that we could always come back and amend it.
That's correct.
Uh, Appalachia Cola has amended their golf cart ordinance three times now. But I will say one thing. You said to bring them back into legal operation. Golf carts have been operating for almost, uh, in, in a couple of months, golf carts will have been operating in the city limits of Florida illegally for 40 years. They've never operated legally. We, the commission, not necessarily this board, but the commission for the past 40 years has looked the other way, and has, has the police department. But there has never been designated golf cart roads according to the Florida statute, and golf carts were operating illegally in, in the city limits. Is that correct, Mr. Hartman? Were, were the golf carts operating illegally for 40 years?
We did not have a golf cart ordinance.
Right.
And so, we have designated no roads that golf carts could.
But we, we're gonna get an ordinance, we're gonna have, it sounds to me like every road in Carabelle, except for the state highway, is gonna be designated golf cart, for golf cart operation. You'll get an ordinance, and you'll be able to operate your golf carts legally. And then we'll become golf cart friendly, and people can come here and visit, and drive their golf carts, and rent golf carts, and that kind of thing. So, uh, expect to see a bunch more on the road, I believe.
Yeah, I'd like to address that too, make that statement. Where I made that statement about golf cart ordinances, we, we can move forward, and get our folks back on the road. Public realize, with a golf cart, cart ordinance, Mr. Attorney, you correct me legally if I make a misstatement. The only thing we're doing here in creating a golf cart ordinance beyond state law is identifying the roadways. Every other law, rule, and regulation is state law, and it's been in effect for years. Am I correct?
Correct.
Exactly. So the only thing we're doing by creating an ordinance is identifying the roadways, and that's it.
And that's what makes it legal to operate your golf cart, is when the roadways are identified by state. Um, I had some questions, uh, uh, under the, uh, hold, uh, assume risk, uh, and hold harmless, section five. I got quite a few calls after our commission meeting discussion. Folks want to understand, where is the liability? Who is liable if a golf cart causes an accident?
I would say whoever's at fault for the accident.
I mean, I shouldn't have said the golf cart, the operator of the golf cart causes, so whoever's at fault for the accident.
I mean, this is sort of a, I mean, this is my opinion only, right? I mean, this is not, this is not a city. The city wouldn't get involved in that, right? Meaning, if someone's driving a golf cart, and they had a conflict with another golf cart, or car, or person, maybe a dog, like, any number of things, right? Any sort of accident in their golf cart, when they're driving on one of these roads that will be designated, the fault will fall out however the law sees it, right? But it's my opinion, yeah, the city would not, would not have any liability, um, if that's the question. And...
My question, my question came from citizens. They wanted to know what, who, you know, for their own personal vehicle or health. They wanted to know how, how, how that works. Because golf carts aren't insured, I don't believe, you know?
I mean, it would be no different than someone on a bicycle, or anything like that. Meaning, if, if, if the bicyclist, or the golf cart person was at fault, then it's the owner, whoever's probably driving it, and the owner of that. You'd have two people on the hook. It would be the owner of the golf cart, and the person driving it.
Okay, all right, thank you. And for folks who'll watch the video, I hope they, they understand. Then, uh, I, I would ask, and I did ask at the commission meeting, that the signature lines for all the commission members be put on this one? Thank you, on this ordinance. That's, I think, all I have for now. Um, do the commissioners have anything else? Because I'm gonna call for public discussion, comments, and questions. Anything, Mr. Walden? All right, okay. All right, so do we have a public comment? I've got Mary Ray. Okay. Now we have two, so, okay.
My name's Mary Ray, Panhandle Golf Carts. I just had a quick question.
Okay.
If they, if they bring an out-of-town, say, golf cart, or the slow-moving vehicle, and it's already registered in another state, does that count? Say it's ready in Georgia, it's got lot, uh, insurance and all that, it's tagged, they can still ride it?
Two, two things. One, I defer the chief on, on one of it. But if it's a golf cart, as long as it meets these requirements, which does not require it to be registered, tagged, and that, you're fine. But if it's a out-of-state low-speed vehicle...
Yes, it'd be treated like any other vehicle.
You return a golf cart into one.
Yes, so I guess, I'll go off of what the chief's saying, just think of it like a car. If it's registered, insured, it would meet all the Florida requirements, it's good.
You know, on the side-by-sides, whether they're tagged or not, they're not allowed on the road, is right?
Right.
That's a utility vehicle, a side-by-side?
Yes.
I guess that would be, so, okay.
Unless it has tagged, licensed, and insured.
That's what I'm saying, yes, it, it...
If the state will license and insure it.
Because there are some side-by-sides that have tags, and they're ready.
Yeah, but they can also go over 25 miles an hour as well.
Yeah.
So they're not...
Yeah, they're not as slow as low-speed at that point. I wonder, that's what we've got to find out from the DHS and D on that one. Because the statute says no utility vehicle. But DHS and D would be the one that would tag it, and insure it, and license it.
These are questions I'm getting from customers. We're trying to find out. And see.
Yeah, we'll, we'll figure that out.
And on the 30 to 35, um, I was reading up on that. There, there is in gray areas, but there is one spot in there that kind of leaves it up to the municipal powers to change it from 30 to 35. I'll get that up for you, give it to you.
Thank you.
And I had talked to, um, I don't want to call out names, but, um, a Panhandle patio, a Panhandle golf carts out there, um, a couple of, three years ago, about golf carts, uh, trying to get some courtesy transportation at the airport. And so now it looks like that might happen, because we can come down to, um, down Airport Road. But is it 45 mile, okay, I'm sorry. You know, I'm trying to think, where does it turn, 35?
45, I have to go past the bridge.
I hate that.
Yeah, I've already told you.
Okay, all right. We're just trying to get some service out to the airport. But anyway, all right, thank you. So is there another, is there another public comment? Greg Christoffersen. Okay, and, and bring his, bring his little...
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Greg Christoffersen. All right, mine was just pretty much what the mayor was asking about, um, liability. So just say it's a bad accident, and golf cart pulls in front of me, and the driver is killed. And then, you know, lawsuits and stuff come together. Then could, this, that indemnification, uh, releases your, uh, the golf cart driver, but what about myself? Can I sue the city then, because you put this in place? I'm just putting it out there, you know, as a, as an attorney. You know, I've, I've been involved in an accident, the child was killed. I'm basically talking about like, I'm a licensed driver. You know, can I, can I sue the city because you, you know, because you put this in place?
Right, what keeps lawyers in business is anybody can sue anybody at any time. Right? For almost anything. But your question is, because now the city is allowing, is designated, adopting this ordinance, and allowing golf carts to, to be on the city, the streets look at in the city, is the cities, would the city somehow be liable if someone violated the law? Meaning, they crossed 98 at the wrong spot, or, or just ran a stop sign, come across 67, and you, you ran over them, and you were hurt, or your vehicle was damaged? Would you be able to sue the city? Again, you could try, but I don't see how, again, you sort of go back to who was at fault in the accident. Meaning, if you were at fault, I think you have bigger problems than, you know, trying to help the city. If you were not at fault, then you have the liable party, which is the, the city does not guarantee against golf cart drivers acting the fool, or making mistakes driving.
Just trying to keep the city safe, so...
Yeah, yeah, no, appreciate it, yeah.
Bob McDarris. Thanks, come on, sir. And just tell us your name for the record.
Hi, I'm Bob McDarris. I'm out on the phone, I brought my map. That's my map, that's right there. I had a, um, a couple of, of quick questions. I do have, um, a little bit of the same, you know, a little, a little bit of, uh, disagreement, but nothing that I would ever get proud of.
Okay, good.
But I think, I, I think it deserved to be mentioned. But I did have one question on the, um, when you were reading the law. In each instant, you said the word electric. And was that a misstatement, or you meant to add?
No, in one of the definitions, and that's certainly interesting, right? Is, under the definition of low-speed vehicle, it only refers to electric vehicles, under low-speed vehicles.
I just wanted to point out...
No, that, yeah, but not, I did, I did say that.
I know, somebody else will.
Yeah, wheeled electric vehicle, yep.
We could follow up on that between now and the fifth, if you, if you want to, to, because that just, it doesn't make sense, uh, that some low-speed vehicles are gas-powered, and I, I just don't understand that.
It would come, it would create a cleaner ordinance.
Yeah. And just if you didn't say, just no air power, yes, uh-huh.
Well, that's not our ordinance, we have a Florida statute.
It's Florida statute definition there.
Yeah.
So, um, a couple of other questions. I, um, I have to say, I've done a lot of homework and research, uh, simply riding around, looking at the stop signs. And I've been using a golf cart for a long time, and, um, and I have some feelings about the different routes. And the one that I had the, the question about was the, um, 4th Street Northwest. That was one, right away, was one of my checkups, I said, yeah, let's, let's put that in there. But as I drove it over and over, I found that is a very, very difficult intersection. Even if you don't have a bad neck, when you, you're coming down, it, it's a three-way stop. I don't know any, any, uh, 14-year-old children that know the rules of the road for a three-way stop. So, um, it, it is complicated. It's one of the more complicated ordinances in the city. And so I was talking to friends about it, and they said, well, that, that's one, that goes the boat ramp. That goes down to the boat ramp. I said, oh, yes, of course. Now, I thought about it, I, I never have seen a golf cart putting a bobby in there. And, and so I, I thought, maybe that might not be, still may not be the best. They, the, you know, when y'all worked on, on those crossings, did a great job with, uh, Southeast 3rd Street. That's one of my favorite, favorite crossings. You've got a, a long runway that you can see where the cars are coming, and not, you know, and so, it's, and not a lot of hid, hidden traffic. And, uh, so that was a really good shot. But the other one, I, that, 4th Street.
Well, thank you. Now, now, since you have taken time and, and drove around, and you say you, you know, used your golf cart for many years, a long time, do you, do you have another suggestion?
I was afraid you were gonna ask that.
Well...
Here's the, here's the, the whole thing. It's, it's, um, you give up something to get something. And, uh, and that gives you, allows you to the boat ramp. But then there's nothing that allows you to, uh, Carabelle Marina, Mornings Marina, both of them have two entrances to it, and that covers about a quarter of a mile down in front of, in front of the IGA. And I was thinking that something down there might be a little bit better. You can use, I assume, you can use the dirt trail, uh, going the other way, going east, behind Fathoms, and, uh...
Oh, yes, uh-huh, behind, yes.
You can use that, but it's still, you won't be able to get the next block.
Okay. Let me ask Ms. Courtney to pull up the aerial map of that area, because we, we did, we reviewed it, I've been through this for years, and with Chief Hunning's even in the past. And this is one of the reasons we didn't address it, because some locations are gonna be disenfranchised because of the FDOT guidelines. And I'll ask the chief to explain to us about mid-block crossings, and that's what we'll have there at the, at the locations you mentioned.
Yeah, FD, FDOT want to prove that mid-cross, uh, mid-block crossings.
And what is a mid-block crossing?
That's crossing between, between two different blocks. And another block you can't cross, has to be a roadway entering out into another roadway.
Like a four-way intersection?
Right.
And, and they won't even allow a crosswalk at a, at a mid-block crossing?
Right. And the, and the thing to keep in mind too, sir, once, once FDOT does their stuff, they come in, they look at everything, if they don't approve any of the crossings that we have suggested, then we'll reach out to them for suggestions where they may approve one and go that route. But we won't know that until FDOT comes in and does this.
So that boat ramp is, that's...
That's just a suggestion.
That's a considered street, and, and...
Yes.
That would be a mid-block...
But to get on...
Not a good mid-block.
Not a mid-block.
No, not, uh, uh, over here to the Carabelle Marina, Ms. Courtney, um, to the, to the west there. See, there's no, there's no street, there's no way, their driveway is right in the, so there's no way, and, and then it's the same way for the...
That's the Mornings, the next one's the Carabelle Marina.
For the Mornings.
You make me see it better on the property advice.
Uh, and, and, you know, how many... It was a good, that was a good...
That was good.
Yeah. So, and that's, that's what makes it...
Yeah, I see what you mean.
That makes it difficult, and, you know, we thought about crossing here in the years past, and right here, out here in front of City Hall, but they're really going fast out there. And we've asked the FDOT to please slow down our, um, we've had traffic analysis done out here at the curb, I've had a traffic analysis done here in years past, I've had a traffic analysis done at the main intersection downtown. We have asked and asked for them, over the past 11 years, for the FDOT to slow down our speed limit in town to 25, and they absolutely will not do it. And if it was 25, then, you know, we could take golf carts out there as well. If, no, no, we can't, they won't allow some on the state.
Well, I, I just hate for us to, uh, miss a chance to have a crossing, and it doesn't go anywhere, and, uh, and...
It would go to one business.
Yeah.
That's it.
Okay.
And once, and once FDOT comes in and does their thing, then we'll have a clearer picture of what they approve or not approve, and then we can get recommendations from them. Maybe another location on Highway 98 that they may feel is more safer. So...
Okay, well, thank you very much, um, but I did have one other concern.
Okay, good.
That was my softball that I like to have. This one's a little, little tougher. And that's just simply an opinion, and that's the oper, operation age, the operating age. And it, and I would hate to think that we didn't give it all the thought that we could possibly give it, and I'm sure we have. And, uh, it's, it's just a little bit dicey with 14-year-olds. Um, we have no evidence that they know the rules of the road. We're putting them out there, my car weighs 2,000 pounds, we're putting them out there with automobiles, and, um, and it's a really s, serious danger as far as, as far as I'm concerned. But, um, I, I've got all my grandchildren, we, we brought them up on the golf cart. And, uh, but I wouldn't let them, I would never let them go out on the city street without me, even when they were 16 years old in the car. Then they could go, then, then we put them out and use their judgment. And I, I don't, I mean, every parent can use their good judgment and say, no, son, you can go next year. So you can go when you get your learner, or you can do something like that. But, um, the consequences are absolutely final and severe. And I, I, I know that you took all of it in consideration, but this is not for recreation, this isn't for having a good time. We can, that we adults, we can go ride down and watch the sunset and, and get all the fuzzies, and, and that's, and that's fine. And, but many of us have to use it for a, uh, for a purpose, a work, a job, uh, going to the senior citizens in, in one case. And, uh, there are just so many compelling reasons that adults need to use the golf cart. But, and well, I'll ask you all, can you think of one compelling reason that it says that a 14-year-old needs to be driving a golf cart on our highways and city streets? I mean, what's the cir, circumstances? Taking the grandfather to the hospital, okay, that's different. To the Michaelson, that's different, that's an emergency. Is there, I mean, had the discretion, there had to be somebody really compelling saying, uh-uh, this has gotta be...
Do you want me to recap from the last meeting?
That's fine.
Yeah, so, for the last meeting, this, this came up, and state law, uh, sets the minimum age at 14. So it allows 14-year-olds under state law to do it. The commission, um, discussed raising that age, because we looked at other ordinances that include a higher age, 15, 16, you know, on up. Um, I received a call from the Attorney General's office on, to go over some of the opinions that they've issued in the past, and there's an opinion from 2003, um, which we discussed about this specific issue on age, where the Attorney General's office rendered the opinion that a city cannot restrict the age, that once the state basically preempts and says, you know, we cannot require licenses, and anybody 14 or up can drive them, that that is the final word on the matter, that, that cities do not have the discretion to, to bump that up. And if, if we choose to adopt one of these ordinances. Now, the way to keep 14-year-olds off the road and add a golf cart at 14 is to not pass the ordinance, right? And golf carts aren't allowed on the road. But once you allow golf carts on the road, that it was, um, their opinion, that the, the Attorney General's opinion on that still stood, that if we, if we wanted to see if there was a change in that opinion based on some changes to state law, that we should submit to get a new opinion, to see if their opinion changed, basically, to the Attorney General. So we actually went deep on that.
Thank you. Good answer.
And so we may, at my request, ask in the future to, and I may ask that in the future, if we can go out for an Attorney General opinion, which can take up to six months if we can raise the age, a year or two. But we, as, as Commissioner Melander said, and I agree, we don't want to slow down the process at this time to, to get golf carts on the road operating legally. So, um, we'll, we'll, um, maybe go out for an Attorney General opinion sometime in the future.
Uh, uh, I, I want to give you a real example. My wife went to Tennessee to, um, she's back, she went to Tennessee, um, and, uh, and I'm alone with the, um, the expedition truck, and that was the, uh, golf cart saved the day. It was just right, you know, the golf cart and go to the IGA. There, there is obviously obvious uses for all of our, all of our citizens for a golf cart. But one of the things really important, I have to commend you on it, um, how expeditiously you brought up the subject, kept it going, and, uh, and are getting the job done. It's just really a good job. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. So James Sinclair. Oh, Mr. Sinclair.
Well, I think you've already answered my question. Probably about a year ago, you know, you called me and we were talking about getting people from there, going across the bridge, and I told you it was probably impossible. Now, if you've got golf carts that are legal and insured now, just like a car, what can you do to lower the speed limit on the state highway from the bridge, say, up to the beach? Because we get a lot of calls where people just want to get their golf cart from Carabelle or somewhere else and go up there to the beach and run back and forth. And if you could get that down to 35 from there to the beach, you'd get a lot more people coming in.
I don't think that they're gonna allow golf carts on the state road at all, no matter...
He's talking about low-speed vehicles.
Oh, low-speed vehicles, thank you. Uh, and, I mean, all we can do...
DHS could if you're tied up.
Right, yes. If they're, if it's 35 miles an hour, but, yes.
Like, if I rented you one, I'd have a tower meter and tagged, and tagged.
So all we can do is ask the FDOT for a speed limit analysis, which is what they do. Uh, I haven't asked for one out here in this direction. I have asked for them to please put warning signs up in the curb out there before you approach, um, um, Golf Beach Drive, and they haven't done that. I, I actually said on the Franklin County Traffic Safety Team, I chaired that, and we got the, all these reflectors out here, but it took us about five years of asking every year on this, out here, just east of Island View Park. So, you know, we can go, uh, through Courtney, and we can ask the FDOT to come and do a speed analysis out there and see if they can consider lowering, lowering the, that's the only way, that's the only way of doing it.
Well, back then, you told me you had the power, so I said that.
I didn't say I had that power.
And I thought, well, if you've got that much power, you're doing good.
No.
But it would just help you, a lot of people...
It would, and, and it would help it become more of a vacation-style community.
Exactly, yeah, because we get a tremendous amount of, you know, doing that stuff. And also, not to try to sell something, but if anybody needs any work on, we do all that work down there, house and breed on the ride, okay?
All right.
Okay, but let, let me add one, one thing to that, by knowledge that, I know other, some other local, another local government that's asked DOT to look at speed reductions in their areas because of congestion, it's local, and, uh, DOT did not go along with it, just as the mayor described on some other requests. And I know of a recent one that was, had been, well, the request has been going on, I think, for over a year, but DOT declined the request.
Yeah, I listen to that. Well, you could just tell them we're having so much business down there, it's...
Yeah, okay.
We just understand we're helping a lot.
The multi-use path, are they allowed to be, uh, used for the...
If it's eight feet wide.
So, uh, and they're considering extending that to the bridge, Craig?
Yes.
So that would, that would help get them back and forth, with the multi-use path that's in, in the plans already, so...
If it's eight feet wide, then they could come off River Road and Airport Road.
And go all the way down. Okay. All right, now, uh, I know that's all the speaker cards, but I will consider a very brief comment. Does anyone have anything else?
Not you.
You got a hint.
Or it went one time.
I said, one time.
How can Appalachia and St. George Island have their age at 16?
I've already asked that question.
Me too.
Yeah, that's up to them. So, I know.
They will, they face the Attorney General opinion. So, uh, Ms. Julie, did you have something? Okay, well, just come right up here and tell us your name.
My name is Julie Easworth. Uh, yeah, my golf cart is not registered or insurance, but, uh, but my grandparents is the one that bought it, and they're already gone. And, um, is there any, like, okay, so like, would I have a way to put a tag on one?
Yours is just a regular golf cart.
Yeah, you don't need to.
Okay, I was just asked.
Just stay off Highway 98.
Yes, ma'am.
But until, we have not adopted this yet, it won't be done for a couple of, three more weeks.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
All right.
All right. Thank you. Okay, so I'm gonna ask this hard question now. Does anyone in this room think that we are banning golf carts in the city of Carabelle through this process? Is there anyone in this room that thinks that? Does everyone in this room understand that we are, uh, working to adopt a golf cart ordinance that would make operation of golf carts legal on city streets and roads? Does everyone understand that? Okay. Is there any other discussion?
Motion to adjourn.
This meeting is adjourned.